Okay, welcome to those that have joined us here in council chambers as well as those that are joining us from home. We're in a little bit of a different situation this evening in that we called the meeting to order at 5:00 and had a closed session to discuss school board appointments. So appreciate that, and at this point in time, I'd like to certify that closed session. Is there a motion to do that?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we certify our closed session and that we talked about only what we convened the closed session to talk about.
Second. A motion made and seconded that we certify the closed session. Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Cenella.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, now we can, if we could all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation and pledge of allegiance and get us started in the regular session. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we received in the city. As we move forward this evening on several of the issues, guide us. As we serve those in our community, help us to be mindful of those in need. And Jesus, we always ask that you be present with our public safety officers and our military, especially those in foreign lands. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inhales) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Move up here, we've got some special presentations this evening. If I could get these three young ladies to join me. Grace Cenanen, just come right up here, sweetie. Faith Swindler. And Hannah Markden. All right, these three young ladies have all, are all going to receive a certificate of achievement tonight, and I'm going to start with Grace. This certificate of achievement is awarded to Grace Cenanen, and this is a recognition of first place in the kindergarten through second grade category of Tidewater Reads Regional Poetry Competition, and it was titled "A Friend in You." So congratulations, Grace, and great job. (Applause) Is that the Assistant City Manager or back there? I thought it was. All right. All right, the next one is Faith Swindler. Okay, and this is in recognition of a second-place finish in sixth to eighth grade category, and this one is Tidewater Reads Regional Poetry Competition, and the title was "The Soloist Symphony." And so Faith, congratulations.
(Applause)
And the last one here is for Hannah Markden, and this is in recognition of a second-place finish in the third to fifth grade category in Tidewater Reads Regional Poetry Competition in the land of ice and snow. Congratulations, Hannah.
(Applause)
Great job. Great job to all of you, and if you'd like to listen to the rest of the meeting, you are welcome to stay, or you can slide out the door if you prefer. All right, the next item on the agenda this evening is an audience for visitors, and if there's somebody in the audience tonight that would like to address counsel on any subject, except for the public hearing, if you're here to speak on the public hearing for the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, I'll ask you to withhold comment for just a second. Anybody open for that? Seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask for consideration by counsel. Actually, I'd like to move that we modify the agenda at this point, okay? So let's do a modification of the agenda to add the school board appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we add item four on the new business, a motion to appoint members to the school board.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded that we modify the agenda to add school board selection to that. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Cenella.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, then the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Is somebody prepared with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our May 14, 2018, regular session.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded that we approve those minutes. Any questions or comments of counsel? Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Cenella.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Rest in peace.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried with a vote of six to zero with one abstain.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, and this public hearing is to address something that we've been talking about for several months. This is an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds for certain capital improvements to include middle school and all the things that we've been talking about in the past budget season. With that said, Randy, is there a presentation?
Yes, sir. Both our financial advisor and our bond counsel are here. They've got a brief presentation just to go back over with counsel sort of the plan moving forward. I would add that this is the, is consistent with the CIP, it is recently approved, and also the budget. So this is the implementation step that moves us towards the middle school renovation, the HVAC system completion here, the TMDL money, and also when I'm missing a bus, and the other part of the fire truck. So it sets that, it sets that in motion, what we referred to previously as phase one of the borrowing.
Okay.
And Kyle is here, and Dan, they'll introduce themselves. You know them, but the public may not, and then they've got a relatively short presentation for you.
Actually, he told me it was about an hour.
Mr. Mayor, we will talk for as long as you want us to talk. We'll try and keep it to some.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Well, again, Mr. Mayor, members of counsel, and Mr. City Manager, nice to see everybody this evening as always. And as Dan Siegel, who is your bond counsel, sort of the legal side of things, if we are the maybe numbers side of things, that is Dan's role with his firm, Sands Anderson, and has been for a very, very long time with the city. So that's Dan, who's also serving as maybe Vanna White for the moment there. But what you have in front of you is what is hopefully a brief presentation. Again, we'll go through anything we need to, but I think as both the mayor and manager mentioned, what we're talking about tonight is really the culmination of a lot of planning that's gone in by virtue of your involvement, the school board, the staff, along with ourself, to get the middle school project and those other variety of projects really rolling and get those such that they can come to fruition. And so with that, on page number one, as you all recall, in the city council, we've gone through a very thorough capital planning process for the last couple of months. That culminated with your budget, with your capital program, and the adoption of that budget that sets all the pieces in motion for us to be able to go out and execute a financing that'll fund what we call phase one of the capital program, mainly the middle school with another variety of school projects to come with it. We studied carefully the both capacity and affordability to do this on the debt side of the equation, and we've talked about it a couple of times with counsel, and again, all factored into your budget and your capital program as you've adopted it as a city council. So really where we are right now is the implementation side of things. On page two, again, just a quick little review of the projects and maybe general order of magnitude as we think about numbers here. The overall capital program was kind of divided into two phases, got a phase one and a phase two. Phase one totals about 17.6 million in project costs, again, mainly the middle school, roughly 17 million, and those other variety of, we'll call it smaller projects, not many less important, but smaller projects that the city manager mentioned. That comprises phase one, and that's what we'll go out and execute with your approval tonight, really within the next month, obtain that funding, lock in the interest rates, and that'll be set and kind of ready to roll. What will follow behind that, with the timing still to be determined depending upon the progression of the projects and the actual project costs, will be phase two. That's expected to be a little bit over $5 million, the two of them together totaling the $23 million that we've talked about here for a couple of months. The way we're going to go ahead and obtain that financing is through a competitive public sale. So this phase one bond issue will be sold competitively in the public markets, which is something the city's done numerous times in the past. And what that enables us to do is to give any potential bidder the ability to buy those bonds, and really the lowest interest rate, I mean, use that term, lowest interest rate is the winner when it comes to that bidding. I think a question was asked within the authorizing documents exactly how that is awarded, maybe some of the terminology, and basically what happens is there's a bidding process that's open to any, any firm, any financial institution that's able to buy the bonds, and the winner of those bonds will be the institution that provides the lowest all-in or true interest cost to the city. So that'll be an interest rate that is fixed for the entire life of the loan, and it will factor in any costs that are associated with it, it will factor in any premiums or discounts that may be associated with the bonds, and so it's truly an all-in, apples-to-apples comparison. Any institution that provides the lowest interest rate for the city will indeed be the winner, and so that's the way that that, that happens. As we flip to page three, Dan to my right can walk you through the legal sort of technicalities that you may have questions about that are contained within the ordinance that really is the authorizing document, as well as any of the other financing documents. But basically with your public hearing tonight and adoption of the ordinance, we'll be sort of set to go. That's the last action we'll need of city council in order to go out and execute phase number one. Another point we'll make, a question that was asked, the not-to-exceed interest rate for the public hearing is $18.5 million. What's the difference between 17.6 and 18.5? Those two numbers really take into account both the cost of the transaction, that would include anything from legal costs, R costs, rating agencies, underwriters, et cetera. We don't expect that to be any larger than 2.5% of the size of the loan. So maybe if you equate that to your typical residential mortgage, if you're paying maybe 4%, 5%, 6%, that's usually the pretty good sort of way to think about that. And then we also build it a contingency just in case the market moves a little bit, not from an interest rate perspective, but to allow us the greatest amount of latitude when the bidders put a bid in, that they can put one in that gives us the lowest possible interest rate. So those are the two, two sort of portions there that make up that difference between 17.6 and 18.5, and all that is consistent with the capital planning that was done to set up both your budget and your CIP and all the cash flows and the planning that we've In terms of next steps, just to give you a sense of the schedule going forward, on page number four, again, the top of the page with your consideration and approval tonight, that's the last action we need of city council. We can, at that point, work with staff and the rating agencies, et cetera, to get all the rest of the pieces in place. We'll be talking with the rating agencies next week, and are looking forward to those discussions as you've got a very good story to tell. And then really the critical date, as you think about the bond issue, is going to be the week of June 25, probably in around the 26th, 27th, whereby the bonds will actually be sold, and that's when the interest rate is set, again, for the life of the loan. So at this point, we expect or sort of estimate is probably in the mid to high 3% range. The capital planning was all done at 4.5%. So where the market is right now is certainly well below where that capital planning was done, but we don't like to sort of count the chickens before they hatch. We can't control interest rates, can't control markets, so until that, that date actually happens, we don't know what the interest rate is. But there are certain triggers and parameters within your ordinance that Dan will talk about that protect the city on the, on the upside in the event we get a surprise over the next month. We don't expect, but certainly we have those triggers in place. So with that, really by the end of June, we should have the, the interest rate set, locked in. We would then move to close on those sometime in July. The exact timing to be figured out, that's when the funds would be in hand and the project obviously could get going, or projects, I should say, can get going from that standpoint. And then again, phase two in the future, FY 2020, we'll figure that out with the city manager, with you all, as you kind of work through phase one and, and those projects. So with that, maybe a lot of information in a short time period. Happy to answer any questions. Anything is confusing, there's an appendix that really is information you've already seen, just there for reference in terms of the capital planning. And again, any questions, happy to answer them.
Any questions of counsel? I know we've all seen this, and it seems, you know, kind of that maybe we're just not reacting, you know, $17 million bond is, is nothing to sneeze at. I think we are just very comfortable because we've been talking about this for a year. So I don't want to come off as, you know, counsel's just not thinking about it or anything like that. Been talking about this for a while. I guess the one question I would ask Kyle is, when we do go up to see the bond rating agencies next week, we'll be talking about the entire financing.
That's right.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
So whenever, be it this council or another council, at the, in 2020, when that ever comes up, they will already have crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is to do another offer for phase two.
That's right, yeah. What we'll end up doing is giving the sense of the whole plan better that way to be sort of an open book and be transparent, and that will have your rating updated by virtue of that, and really we should be teed up for phase two by virtue of that process, whenever it is, we kind of get to that, that timing.
Okay.
Sir.
Okay. Any questions?
Mine's a lot shorter.
Okay.
He said it was short, but.
He said it was short.
So you have a bond ordinance before you. I guess at this point, we want to, and maybe you already asked this, and I missed it, it was so quick, but the, the public hearing, whether there's anybody who wants to speak.
We'll do the public hearing after you, after you present.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Well, I'll just summarize the bond ordinance that you have before you. You've seen something like that, this in prior years. It basically approves up to 18.5 million, that's what we advertised. Again, as, as Kyle said, those are, those are to give you a lot of parameters, to do discounts and premiums, and however it might have to be structured to give you the lowest interest rate possible. The, the, the bonds will go out a little over 20 years maximum. We've got up to 2040, but we probably will be less than that. The top interest rate could possibly be is 5%, so if the market really moves that much, we'll come back to you, but that's, that's the top interest rate. And otherwise, this bond ordinance is the last action you'll have to take as a city council on it. It approves the official statement that describes the city and its finances, and that's part of what you're going to be bringing to the rating agencies as well. There's a draft of that that's been out and that you, that is available for everyone, but it's a preliminary draft at this point, so there's a lot of improvements to make. The, the other documents are pretty, are pretty standard as well, but the official statement is the most major beyond this bond ordinance. Otherwise, this is a full faith and credit to the city, so this will be a general obligation debt, as in other debts that the city has entered into, and that's my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
Yeah, just one. It's my understanding that the sooner we act and get this all approved, the more likely we'll stay in the 2.5% range.
I'm, I'm hopeful for that. I mean, I guess, I guess we just heard that some, some rates have gone up and down the last few days, but.
To make sure we're all.
Could you clarify? I personally, I heard you say.
At 3.5 was right.
3.5.
3.5 to.
Mid to high 3s.
Mid to high 3s is where the market is right now, and certainly in the future, it could be higher, it could be lower. We can't tell you moving faster is going to make it any better, but certainly where we are overall interest rate-wise.
Seems like they're changing, not in the best direction.
That's right. That's right. See, there's, there's been a general, a general trend upwards, so one would think getting it locked in sooner than later is going to be a benefit.
Okay.
Good question.
Anything else, counsel? I saw a hand over. Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. Tonight is a public hearing, and I'll, I'll open that public hearing to see if there's anybody in our audience that would like to address counsel on this potential bond Seeing no one that wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing and ask counsel for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds of the city of Pecosin, Virginia, providing for the form, details, and payment thereof.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded that we proceed ahead and do this bond offering to the market. Questions or comments of counsel? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Councilman Cenella.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you all for your time in traveling down here this evening, and we'll see you next week. As we move on here, we're under new business, and the first one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service, Wildlife Services for Wildlife Damage Management. So how would you like to proceed? Randy, you want to introduce this young lady?
I was going to ask Graham to do it. Assistant City Manager Graham Wilson has been our point of contact to staff, so.
As I recall, he was catcalling from the.
That's true. Well, Jennifer's already up here, so I'll just introduce, that's okay, Jennifer Cromwell, she's with the United States Department of Agriculture. I've talked to her on the phone, and I've met with Joseph Gentry in, in city hall to talk about this issue, and Jennifer's here to give all the updates and answer any questions y'all may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. One thing that comes up a lot is what does the USDA have to do with wildlife? So just to kind of lay that out, we are the federal agency that is directly in charge of dealing with wildlife damage. So we are under the Department of Agriculture, but we are the federal agency that's charged with all sorts of wildlife damage control. And what I want to talk about a little bit tonight, and I'll try to keep this kind of short, is Canada goose damage management. I understand a lot of you are probably familiar with some of the damage that's occurring to property in town, such as at South Lawson Park. We kind of went by there, and I saw there was an excessive accumulation of some remains from the geese, the goose droppings there. So that's one major concern, is my understanding here in town. Another is, though, the threat to aviation at Langley Air Force Base. I don't know how many of you are familiar with it, the threats, the threats that geese can pose to aviation, both commercial and military, but you might remember about, not quite 10 years ago, I guess, the plane that landed on the Hudson in New York, that was where it ingested a Canada goose. And there have been other incidents, many, where geese have caused damage to aviation and risked lives. So we're very concerned about the threats that these geese here at Pecosin can cause for Langley. You're within a three-mile radius, you're right directly in the flight pathways for the air force coming in and out of there, so, so we are concerned about that. And what we'd like is to work with Pecosin on some options for working together to cooperatively manage the goose damage here, both for your own issues that you might be having on certain sites, and also for protection of aviation at Langley. So I just kind of want to talk a little bit about what that would entail, and in general, when we're dealing with goose damage management, we recommend, we recommend an integrated approach, which means no one method tends to be the end-all when it comes to goose management. You need to use a variety of different methods. They kind of fall into different categories. One of the first things that we would recommend is if the, the city Pecosin can work at their, their parks and public areas to eliminate any wildlife feeding. A lot of times, we recommend that you post signs that say things like, "Keep the wild and wildlife, feeding of ducks and geese prohibited. It's not good for the ducks and geese," and it's certainly not good when you're trying to manage damage and discourage those birds from using those areas. So doing cultural things like that can really have a big effect. Another thing is habitat management around ponds and, and water areas where the geese are walking up from the water to feed. We recommend using things like riprap or letting vegetation grow up, anything that we could discourage the geese from feeling comfortable there, moving between water and feeding areas. So that's something that property owners, property managers can implement to try to discourage geese on their own properties. There's some other things, though, that I think we could work jointly on, such as dispersal of geese. Geese tend to make themselves at home, they're long-lived birds, so once they find an area that they like, they tend to stay there. I'll back up a step and mention that the geese that I'm talking about now are the resident Canada geese, although they're protected, just like migratory Canada geese are, they're a little bit different, meaning they breed here. They were born, and they grew up here, they raised their young here, they never migrated. These are resident Canada geese. So these birds live a long, long time, they raise their young here, they tend to come back to the same areas over and over. So harassment is sometimes quite difficult, and that's where it becomes a challenge to be more persistent than the geese. By harassment, I mean doing things like you can chase them with dogs, you can use paintballs to scare them off, not hit the birds, but use paintballs around the birds just to scare them. Noisemaker cartridges, like pyrotechnics, are used in a lot of localities just to scare the geese out of the area, but you have to be very persistent and try to use them every time you see geese showing up. So, so that's another effective thing that we recommend. So putting all of those things together, another, another thing, excuse me, that works in some locations is the use of chemical repellents. It tends to be kind of a temporary solution, and it tends to be kind of expensive, but in protecting very small plots, it can, it can be effective when used with other things. The next thing that we have to think about is looking at the population management of these geese on a little bit bigger scale, and one thing that can be done and is being done in a lot of areas is nest management. As you know, in generally March, early April, the geese lay their eggs, and usually five or six eggs per nest, sometimes that varies, and they'll, the eggs will hatch, and then they'll raise their young, and what happens then is you have these young that can't fly. So if you go out there and you try to scare the geese away, you can try as, as much as you want, they're not going to leave the young and fly away. So it makes your harassment that much more ineffective. So there's a technique called oiling or addling the goose eggs, and you can easily register from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for a permit, it just takes a few minutes, and you go out there, and what we recommend is, is oiling the eggs, coating them with corn oil, and the eggs will never hatch, but the geese will sit on them for a few weeks, whereas if you broke the eggs or removed them, the geese would make a new nest. But when you oil them, they'll sit on them, the eggs will never hatch, and then you don't have any, one, you don't have any increase in your population that year, and two, you don't have a bunch of young that can't fly that are keeping the adults there for even longer. So that is something that we are trying to implement in this area, given all the airfields that we have in this part of the state, that we're really trying to implement in a lot of areas. Northern Virginia has been very, very aggressive with it, I know Fairfax County's been aggressive with nest management in recent years, and it seems to be making a difference on a large scale in some areas. So allowing, encouraging your own homeowners to do it, allowing your city personnel to do it, maybe working with us, we'd be more than happy to come in and do oiling and addling of nests for you. That's something that we would definitely promote. And then when it comes to goose management, kind of what we can generally consider our last resort is the removal of the actual geese. And there are different methods that we use for that, but in more suburban, urban areas, what we're really talking about is what we call goose roundups. From about mid-June to mid-July, geese molt their flight feathers, and they're not capable of flight, and that's our window of opportunity to come in, push all the geese together in big groups, live capture them, remove them, take them away. What happens to those geese is they, they can't, they cannot be relocated in the state of Virginia, so they're actually taken to a processor, they are euthanized, and then the meat is donated for use at places like wildlife rehabilitation centers and nonprofit zoos and places like that. So it does, it does get used. Like I said, we consider that kind of a last resort when all of those other methods that I've tried have been ineffective. In this case, because of the proximity to the airfield at Langley, I think that we identify localities here in the, in the city of Pecosin that have large numbers of geese that are a direct threat to aviation, that we might like to go ahead and do some population reduction. So what we're. Like I said, we consider that kind of a last resort when all of those other methods that I've tried have been ineffective. In this case, because of the proximity to the airfield at Langley, I think that we identify localities here in the, in the city of Pecosin that have large numbers of geese that are a direct threat to aviation, that we might like to go ahead and do some population reduction. So what we're asking is that the city of Pecosin work with us on a site-by-site basis to consider doing that. We're already working very closely with some of the surrounding localities, York, Newport News, Hampton, on this issue. And we've just more recently identified some of the gatherings of geese here in Pecosin that we think are also a threat. So like I said, what we'd like is permission to work with you on a site-by-site basis to consider, you know, can we come in and help with dispersal? Can we come in and do the nest management for you? And if necessary, can we come in and maybe remove those geese? So, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. Go ahead, let's, let's start with Bud. Go ahead, Bud.
What did you say you do with the eggs to stop them from hatching?
So there's two choices. One is oiling, which would mean we just take corn oil, food-grade corn oil, and coat the eggs with them, and then the eggs will not hatch. The other is called addling. And basically, you shake the egg until the embryo becomes loose, and then again, it's no longer viable and it won't hatch.
Okay. Bud?
How effective is, like on our detention, retention ponds, how effective is surrounding them with monofilament line? Does that help at all?
It, it depends on what else is available. So, I mean, I hate to say that, but if the geese are, have somewhere else almost as good, that's easier to go to, and then they will. So I would say when you have a neighborhood with a lot of homes around somewhere like that, if you have one or two neighbors who put up monofilament line around their yard, it's probably enough to make the geese go a couple of doors down to the yard that doesn't have it. If you have a pond where they really like to hang out and you put that all the way around, they may just scoot under or go over, it's, it's hard to say. Sometimes it works. Again, I would recommend it in combination with other things. On its own, it's not likely to solve all your problems, but in combination with harassment and the other methods, it, it may help, so.
Are the sites restricted just to public property? Or like, if they're big, open fields, can we get the landowners' permission to do one of these procedures?
If we had written permission from individual landowners, then we could also help individual landowners do work on those properties. But we would need their specific permission.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information and appreciate the offer to help us with a problem that a lot of people do, I think we've been ignoring it for a while. And we were, we were actually very happy to hear that probably kicked-start us into gear is controlling the geese population, because a lot of times, we just tend to believe that they're protected and there's nothing that you can do. And I think we've learned a lot in the last several weeks. So council, with that said, is there a, a motion to consider this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service, Wildlife Services for Wildlife Damage Management.
Second.
Okay, a motion made in second, that we offer, that we authorize the city manager to enter into that agreement with the USDA. And really appreciate that offer. Questions or comments of council? Yes, sir?
The resolution is limited to South Lawson Park. If there are other city areas, is this resolution limited, restricted to South Lawson Park?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Moore, it was specifically intended to be limited to South Lawson Park. There had been two pieces of publicly owned pro, city, publicly owned property that were identified. One was South Lawson, the other was Messick Point. I felt, and I think Graham concurred, that beginning with one place and seeing how it worked made more sense than, than expanding that. That doesn't in any way limit a private party in, in working with USDA directly.
Okay. That's interesting. I think, you know, council's perspective, I think, is, might be more leaning forward.
Yeah, I always think, I'm sorry I didn't pick up on that because I've got one place in mind, that is there every day, all day. And if the home, if the property owner would agree to it, I'd like to open this up to other areas. So I'd like to amend my motion to include other areas as, as we can get permission to do.
So let's just, let's just talk briefly and make sure we do this right. Because I don't want to come back. I think council's intention here is not to have to come back to us each time you want to add a, add a location. I think what I would recommend is that we modify the words to say, whereas South Lawson Park and other areas within the city of Pecosin, with other public areas within the city of Pecosin could be open with the city manager's approval. Would that be fair?
What about the private?
Private, I don't think that we need anything, because that's something that we can leverage. The private community is still going to get the benefit of the USDA's help and guidance, not necessarily that they will come to private property and take them off, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
If I could, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that a private property owner can work directly with you. We're granting their permission to do it on our public properties through this action. Our, the city council does not need to consent for a private property owner to work with USDA. That would happen between those two parties.
That's fine. So I would think that we would just want to make sure that the private citizens, in other words, like our television channel and all that sort of stuff says, hey, here's how you, you go about this. But I don't want to tie our hands. I mean, it could be Messick Point next, it could be Amory's Wharf area next, after that, it could be some other park in the city, or city, even a school. And I don't want to limit your, the staff's ability to say, yes. Here is, if we push them off from South Lawson Park, they show up at the elementary school, right? So I don't want to limit our capacity to handle this issue. And I think that's what council's wanting to do. So if you're okay with those words, then I think we can move forward.
Yeah, I'll modify my motion to include after South Lawson Park and other public areas.
Within the city of Pecosin?
With, yeah.
Okay. And then there's a second?
Second. And let me ask one other question. And we don't have to have council approval to encourage staff to publicize this to the maximum extent. That'll just happen, right?
We hadn't contemplated doing a public release for USDA, but we certainly could.
Well, at least encourage...
Sure.
Or let our private citizens, or encourage our citizens to work with USDA.
Know that it's available.
Know that it's available, that's all.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So I believe that the motion that we have, and second it, is that we allow this to the city manager enter an agreement, enter into an agreement with the USDA to manage South Lawson Park and other areas within the city of Pecosin to handle the geese population. Everybody on board? And are there any questions or comments to that motion and second? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Certainly. Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much and thank you all for taking your time from the USDA to come see us this evening. And if y'all have any friends in fish and wildlife, we'd like to introduce them to you. All right. Next item under new business is an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2018. Tanya?
Yes, thank y'all. I just thought about, you know, I didn't know if Randy was going to assign me a new job description of oiling eggs, so I have that in my mind right now. In front of you is just an additional appropriation that we do from time to time. We've gotten donations from various departments, as well as additional state aid for the library, and then additional money for the fire program. So the ordinance in front of you allows me to put this on the books officially.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion to move forward with us?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2017 and 18.
Second.
All right, motion made in second, that we approve this ordinance. Questions or comments? Evie, please.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Southall? Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried with a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. The next one should not be difficult. This is a resolution canceling the first meeting of the months for June, July, and August of 2018 for city council. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution canceling the first meeting of the months of June, July, and August of 2018.
Second.
Okay. Questions or comments? They're ready to vote, all the lights are on. All right, Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, then the new item that we added to the agenda, and this is a, a resolution making school board appointments. So is somebody prepared to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the school board with the following names inserted. From the eastern precinct, Wayne Holcomb; from the central precinct, Dr. Gary Carter; the at-large, Michael Trautman. And all terms will expire on July the first, 2021.
Second.
Okay, a motion made in second, that we put those three names on the school board. Questions or comments? I'll make one. One is that we interviewed some, some, some great candidates tonight. I will tell you, there was, there was nobody in that room that could not serve on our school board or, and did not desire to serve on that school board. We felt like this was the right fit for the time. And with that said, that's not a note of discouragement to anybody. I could have appointed any one of those interviewees with a clear conscience. So appreciate the people that have shown interest and congratulate these folks. Any other comments? Okay. With that said, Evie, please.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Vice, Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the vote carried with a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, very good. And comments of the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only one thing, I apologize to anyone watching at home. Our audiovisual system went down prior to the presentation by Davenport, which was supposed to be a PowerPoint presentation. We will post that tomorrow as an appendix or as an addendum to today's agenda with appropriate notation, letting you know that it was added after the fact. But we, we intended to have it ready for everyone to see and I apologize, I'm not sure what happened. But other than that, I have no comments at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Council directives. Councilman Southall, we'll start down your end.
I'd just like to thank everyone at home and here that came to participate in the city government. And I would like to add my personal thanks for everyone who applied for the school board position and look forward to their being appointed to the school board or another board sometime in the future.
Okay. Janice?
Just want to concur with what the mayor said, and Bud, we had great candidates. It wasn't a, you know, it was a hard thing to look at all of them and decide, okay, who from these great candidates do we pick? And would hope that that doesn't discourage any of the candidates that weren't selected from continuing to try for that position again or another board. And really like that we had more than one to choose from for each seat. That's a good thing when you have citizens that want to participate in their city government and would encourage any other citizens. We've got plenty of, plenty of boards besides the school board to serve on. And so would encourage citizens to do that.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
I will concur. That was an exceptionally great group of candidates.